Over there, please. Can you hear me? Okay. Great. All right, good evening. It's 5:30 here on Tuesday, September 3rd, and I'd like to call to order this regular business meeting of the Stevensville City Council. And like to welcome everybody that's here tonight. And I really appreciate the crowd that has joined us this evening. We've got a full agenda, a lot to go over. Before I get into the agenda and the call for Citizens General Discussion, there's two items that I would like to address. This month, E wrath County kicks off the United Way program. And we live in a community and in a county that is known for a giving heart. And we're fortunate this evening to have Dr. Janice Petronas here tonight, who's the president, that was going to give us a brief update on what the program, the kickoff is, and some of the things that we can look forward to. So if you wouldn't mind coming over here to the mic so we can hear you. Thank you.
My students would tell you, hearing me has never been a problem.[74.12][74.12](Laughter). Thank you so much for this opportunity. And all of the councilmen have a copy of our E wrath County United Way brochure. As the mayor said, September and October are United Way months. I want you to be aware that last year we raised over $275,000 and dispensed that to over 23 nonprofit -- or not over exactly, 23 nonprofit organizations in Stevensville, Dublin, that serve throughout the county. This year, we have added an exciting event called A Taste of E wrath County. Will be on September 21st at the Belavita Ranch. And we invite everyone to come and have a taste of the finest food and beverages that we have in E wrath County. And if you would like more information, all you have to do is contact us at the United Way office.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
September 21st.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Now, I'll just mention, you know, the president this year, Dr. Greg Hubbard, and campaign co-chair, Dr. Kathy Ray. So, really appreciate those three and their leadership with the program. If I could ask Walter and Mark to come over to the podium real quick. They've got a second. Walter's gonna have to leave the program. The state of Texas has a program. The Texas Comptroller manages, it's called the Leadership Circle Program. And it is set for cities and government to meet some standards of local government. And let me just read to you from Susan Combs, the Texas Comptroller. "I am pleased to inform you that the city of Stevensville has earned 2013 Gold Leadership Circle Award. That's our fourth year in a row. Your application scored 17 of 20 possible on our rating criteria. Your listing on our Texas Transparency website now displays the gold seal to indicate that you received this award. And they've enclosed a copy of the award and want to congratulate you on your success in moving forward on financial transparency and enjoying our leadership circle." So let me, Walter and Mark, just appreciate your work with this. And I guess Walter did most of the heavy lifting. See if he gets the certificate here.[232.02][232.02](Applause). Okay, we'll move forward now into the second agenda item, which is Citizens General Discussion. And I'll just call on these as Cindy gave them to me. And if you'll just come forward and state your name and address for the record, and then just ask you to limit your remarks to three minutes, or if you're making a group presentation, to 10 minutes. So Ms. Beverly Yates.
I'm Beverly Yates. I live at 1221 North Barton, Stevensville. And my deal is about the pit bulldogs in the city limits. We have a numerous amount of them. People can't even walk down the street without them barking at you. I had some across the street nearly get me the other morning. And they chased another man. And they're just dangerous. And I think something needs to be done. Because it's just, it's all uncalled for. They're made to fight. They need to be out in the country, or outside the city limits, where kids aren't in the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next, Virginia. Okay, you want to wait for the public hearing? Okay. Are there any other general citizen comments? Any discussion items? All right, if not, I'll turn the floor over to the E wrath County Appraisal District for their annual report. Mr. Lee.
Hello. I'm Jerry Lee. I'm sure most of you know who I am. Just wanted to give you some updates on 2013, the taxable amounts and things like that. We had a, the city of Stevensville had a little over a billion, 400 million in market value, which is about $94 million up from last year. You had $983 million in taxable value. And that's about $36 million increase over 2012. Now, I'm sure the question comes, how come the big discrepancy there? Well, it mostly comes from exemptions. Freeport abatements and stuff like that, that take that up. In Freeports, you have a total of just a little over $125 million in value that gets granted a Freeport exemption. And you have, in abatements, 27,500,000 that comes off in abatements. And then, there's almost $600,000 in pollution control exemptions throughout the city of Stevensville. Some of your big changes, we had a lot of businesses this year that had some big increases in inventories. Millions of dollars increases in inventories. And that was one of the things that really led towards that $94 million increase in market value. But a lot of that, which the biggest one was FMC, is got an abatement to take care of most of that. So you didn't get to see that as a money-making thing from the tax standpoint. The top 10 taxpayers in Stevensville. FMC is your number-one taxpayer within the city of Stevensville. That's probably not a surprise. Tejas Tubular is number two. Stevensville Campus Crest, which is, that's apartment complex, is what that is. St. Cobain is number four. Stevensville Student Housing is number five. Walmart Stores is number six. Now, that is only the personal property. That's the inventory side of their value. Boski River Associates, which is the shopping center, is number seven. Encore Electric Delivery is number eight. Stevensville Real Estate Investments is number nine. And Wilmington Trust Company is number 10. And Wilmington Trust is Walmart's real estate. As for looking into 2014, at this point, residential, I haven't seen too many things that are really jumping with residential. We're just sort of still kind of staying the same. We might be beginning to inch up just a little bit, but nothing that I'm getting excited about. I think commercially, we seem to be doing pretty good. All of the income-producing properties that pay taxes in Stevensville were up this year. And I have no indication that that's going to change for 2014. So I think as long as that side of the equation is doing good, that's probably going to lead to the other side of the equation, residential, to start doing better in the future. And that's basically it, unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sine.
I know that on real estate, for rental properties, you can do your assessment based on several different ways. One of them is actual assessed value, and the other one is like income basis. Is that, or other things besides just rental properties? Or is there other? You can do that for others as well?
Yeah, we can do that for anything that works off into shopping centers, that rent, office space that rents, apartments. All of those kind of properties, we generally work off the income approach.
Okay. Are any of these properties using that approach right now?
Well, the, of the top 10? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Well, the apartments would be, for sure.
Boski River?
Boski River would be, yes.
The reason I'm asking is because it would indicate some of how the economy is going if we're using an income basis, and their income is up.
And I guess that's, I mean, it's either to the advantage or disadvantage to the company itself.
They can choose.
You know, they're making money, they're paying more taxes. They're not making money, they're paying less taxes. So it works out for them.
Have you seen very many people or anybody that has been using the income basis for their taxes to go down? Any, for their income has been going down? That'd be an indication of our economy, how it's doing, so that's why I'm asking.
Not in 2013. Now, 2012 and before, yeah, we saw some of those go down. But they are rebounding and coming back.
Okay.
Which, that's a good thing.
Any other questions? Russ?
Go ahead. Thank you for coming, Jerry. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Exactly when does a property go on the tax roll? As far as its construction, completion, opening up for business, or occupied?
Well, the assessment date in the state of Texas is January 1st. And there are some exceptions with different kinds of property that have, they've convinced the legislature that they needed a different day to have their property assessed. So some, few exceptions are done differently. But generally, it's January 1st, the condition and the state of the property on that day. Now, that's really hard to tell what everything is on January 1st. But when we look at income, we're looking at the income on what it was through January, or through December 31. If there's a house that's being built and it's under, it's 50% complete on January 1, it goes on the roll at 50%. So that's the way that works. But it's status on January 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Jerry, how much of that 15.2 million from new constructions in retail development?
I don't know exactly. I just don't know off the top of my head, and I didn't look at that. I can find that out.
Just be interested to know how much of that is residential versus retail?
Yeah, to break that down.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got one question. The growth in Torleton and the student housing, what do you see as an outcome of that on the inventories in the community?
Okay, I guess you're asking just kind of my personal opinion. I don't know that I'm an expert in that. But, you know, as Torleton grows, I think that's always a great thing for Stevensville. And it's gonna, it's gonna help our economy in the long run, no matter what. But when the school is building student housing, that's gonna take away from city housing. And I think it probably will catch up. How long that will take, I don't know.
And Jerry, let me interrupt you, and I apologize for that. But have you had a reading, a legal reading, on how the privatized dormitories are gonna exist from a tax basis? Because Torleton is one of the first universities in the AM system to build a privatized dorm. And I'm curious to know, because of the ownership of that, how the tax, what the tax implications of that will be for the community. We should see some taxes, I guess, is my point.
Yes, yes.
Which is different than traditional.
Yeah, if it's not a completely school-owned dormitory, then it will be taxable.
Okay. Well, it's privately owned and university-operated, is the way they're structured.
They're making money. All the university is doing is basically administrator, I guess you'd call it.
Right, okay. Okay, well, I'd just like for you to, you know, maybe look into that and let us know what, from a tax assessment.
We'll look into that further.
Okay.
I'm receiving information to the contrary.
Okay, well, that's, since this is a first of a kind, obviously, the state's gonna want to say they don't have to pay taxes. And from a city perspective, we should make sure that's the right answer. Because privatized does mean privately owned. And so it's a very important question for us to address.
Well, and, yeah, that is the first one in the state of Texas, but it's not the first one, period.
Right.
Because there's some other states that do have some of that. Some other states have different property tax laws than we do. So it's going to depend on what that is. But I do believe in some of the other states that they have been taxable.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Jerry? All right, anything for Mr. Littleton? Mark, you got anything?
Oh, I just, you know, statutorily, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Appraisal District, our responsibilities are pretty limited. We appraise the chief appraiser, we evaluate the chief appraiser, not appraise. We set the budget, which we think has been very reasonable over the last few years. In fact, we dipped into the fund balance in order to keep from harming the taxi entities. And we appoint the Appraisal Review Board, which this year has done, did an excellent job. And we're very proud of people who worked on that. That's basically it. It looks like it's a very well-run operation. We're very appreciative of what Mr. Lee and his employees do there.
Any questions for Mr. Littleton?
How'd your audit go this year?
I'm sorry?
How'd the audit go this year?
It went better than previous years because we were able to work some things out. But I can't remember exactly what it was.
Yeah, we've had, in a small office here, you always have some controls that they kind of send the flag and say, you know, you don't have enough people doing different jobs. And so we'd always gotten a mark on that. I forget what they call that. A comment that they make in the audit itself. For a number of years, we've gotten that comment. Well, we, two years ago, when they brought in, I guess that's been three years, two years, when they brought in the MAPS deal through the state and they started doing an audit, well, we got wrapped pretty hard because we had that in our audit. And so always before that, it was no big deal. You know, the board knew that it was there. We knew what the problem was. Well, when we got hit on it in the MAPS program, we decided we needed to figure out some way to do something about it. And simply, all we did was took a couple of the duties that the accounting person was handling and separated it and made it work. One person goes to the bank rather than the same person who's making the entry into books, going to the bank. That was one of the things they didn't like. So we separated those duties, and we got that mark off of the audit. And so basically, it was a perfect audit.
We were clean this year.
Appreciate it.
Okay, great. Well, thank you both very much. Appreciate your time and your input. All right, next, we'll move to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I move approval of the annual E wrath County Appraisal District Annual Report?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix, to accept the E wrath County Appraisal District Annual Report. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We'll accept that report as presented. Thank you. Now, we'll move to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've got one item on the agenda tonight. And I will, at this time, open the public hearing to consider a request to rezone from Agricultural District to B2 Retail and Commercial Business District, Lot 1, Block 170, City Edition, located at 1050 South Graham Avenue. And ask Ms. Chu to make her presentation, please. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request to rezone from the Agricultural District to the Retail and Commercial Business District, this property which is located at 1050 South Graham Avenue. This does come forth as a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. You have in your packet on Page 5 an ordinance which would affect the zoning change if you concur with their recommendation. You also have the staff report and a map of the area. You also have the same map that's on the screen. And if you have any questions regarding the staff report, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, any questions for Betty?
Oh, it's the same question I have. Did you have any comments from people around the area?
We had one person that came to the public hearing and did not speak.
So there's no written comments or anything negative about the recommendation?
Okay, any other questions for Betty?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or for the request to rezone, to come forward and state your name and address, if you'd like to. Only if you would care to. Okay. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dory Simonton. And my address is 5487 County Road, 134 in Morgan Mill. Would you like to know what this is about? I mean, the business?
Was there anything that you'd care to share related to the request?
We're with a company called Response Products. It originates from Brokenbow, Nebraska. And about a year and a half ago, we came to Stevensville. Response Products is the makers of a joint supplement for horses and dogs called C to L M. And just because of a difficulty in rural Nebraska even finding sufficient staff, we moved down here and got a facility on the west side of town. We've got five employees down here and looking at a couple more. So we have purchased this property here so that we can continue to operate and slowly make the transition from Nebraska down to here.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, Russ.
Are you speaking because you're in favor of this rezoning and you're going to do business on this property?
Yes.
Okay. Just needed to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Any others wishing to speak in favor of the request? All right, hearing none. Any wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to the request to rezone? All right, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-13.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to adopt Ordinance 2013-13, rezoning from Agricultural District to B2 Retail and Commercial Business District, Lot 1, Block 170, City Edition, located at 1050 South Graham Avenue. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's a unanimous in favor of Ordinance 2013-13 as presented. All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the tax rate for 2013. And at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask any individuals that wish to come forward and speak. Remind you of the three minutes to address the council, and a group presentation are limited to 10 minutes. And I've got a, the forms here, I'll go through first, and then just see if anybody else is wishing to come forward. So, Virginia, back to you, please, if you just come forward and state your name and address for the record.
It's been several years, several years, I guess, what, three, four years since I've spoken. Time has flown by. My name is Virginia Abel, and I live at 104 Linda Lane. Public hearings over the years have become a joke here in Stevensville. We have citizens who appear in front of the council, and they walk away with, "Thank you for your input, but we're just letting you practice speaking. And yes, we are raising your taxes." Cancel. It is time to listen to the voters and vote no. Tonight, I am here speaking against the proposed tax rate. There are three reasons to vote against this tax rate increase. Number one, the city is financially strong enough to take care of the needs of the city. Number two, our city administrator has done a good job holding on to funds and asking for increased taxes each year. And number three, raising taxes puts a burden on the citizens of Stevensville who is struggling to meet their daily expenses. Cancel. By voting to raise taxes, you, the council, will be doing these three things. One, you're not listening to your voters. Two, you're adding to the more of a financial burden onto the citizens. And three, you're giving your city administrator his way once again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Goble.
Good evening. What do you think about the situation we have in Washington, people? Okay, what do you think we've got in the city of Stevensville? Okay, what about the school system around here? It seems to me like Mr. Floyd, every year, has to have more money and more money. Got 29 coaches. That seems to be like an excess. They let one building sit down over here till the termites like to eat it down. Never did supply any suppressing system for the fire department in that location. So now, it comes back to us, we gotta supply more schools. And I'm not saying that we didn't need some. They was in shape, bad shape. But a lot of other places, they got buildings over 100 years old. It's still in great shape. If we'd used a list a little bit more management, take care of the buildings we already have, instead of keep adding on sports and this, that, and everything else with our money, we could manage without a raise there in the school system, which every year, that's a raise. Mr. Lee, every year, he says we got to have a raise because of Austin. Austin says that our evaluation's going up. We don't live in Austin. I live in Stevensville. I pay taxes here. We don't need to raise them taxes every year, right here in Stevensville, because, like I said right here, 94 million excess, 15.2 new construction. These buildings that we live in, everything like this here, we pay taxes on for what we have. The people that's coming in here doing this building, 15.2 million, The people that's coming in here doing this building, 15.2 million, are they gonna pay any taxes? Or we gonna pay for their taxes too with another raise? I think somebody is not, not pin, uh, pushing a pencil just quite right. And I understand the city council is a lot better than it was a few, well, several, well, just a few years ago. It was that the city council got, helped their buddies out. Don't get any new business in here because it might run my business down. Well, now y'all are trying to get some new businesses in here. I know there's one or two left that's still holding on to their, taking care of their buddies, that as a whole, the city council has done a great job. But I'm thinking on this administration being questionable, let's take care of the, of the administration from the top down, not from us down here holding them up. You guys got hours to run me down and pay my taxes. I just got, I'm sorry about that, I wanted just a little bit more. So, you wanna add 4.92 percent more to the taxes? Okay? Let's, let's look at it my way. Let's go the other way. You talk about Walmart rebates and this and that and all that. Let's try it my way. Listen, drop it 5 percent this year. And you won't have to listen to me next year.
Thank you, Mr. Goble. All right, Ms. Mobley?
Hello, my name is Xena Mobley. I live at 684 North Graham Street. First of all, I would like to thank the council members for taking their time to become a public servant to our community. I do not claim to know the hours or the time spent and the effort that it takes. I would like to make my first point absolutely clear. I am not opposed to taxes, nor am I opposing bringing in more revenue. We all understand that it is necessary in order to provide services. Although, I must respectfully disagree with raising the city property tax to almost 5 percent. This may not seem like much of an increase, but when you compare it to how much you're already paying, we have to look at the fact that this will be almost one of the highest city rate taxes Stevenville has ever had. What I would like to see this current council focus more on is providing the environment for economic growth, being done through lowering and opening regulatory barriers and lowering the tax rates. This provides the incentive for growth. Raising taxes slowly destroys that growth. It burdens our business owners with higher cost, and that cost trickles down to the consumers through goods and services. It is a hard pill for me to swallow. Then in a $20 million budget, we cannot simply find $100,000 in cuts. It is a hard pill for me to swallow that our property taxes or our property values keep going up. And then we are also told at the same time that there is absolutely no way that they can offset an increase of taxes. I do also understand that we want to make our city employees pay competitive, but $310,000 was paid out last year, and this proposal is calling for another 250. That's $560,000 in two consecutive years. I am a single mom. I work full-time. I go to school part-time. I've earned everything that I have. And it takes almost everything I have to pay my bills, to put food on the table, and to pay my utilities. So what I'm suggesting to this council is that you need to convince your constituents absolutely 100 percent why it is necessary for you to have to take more of their earnings. And that's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Amy Miller?
Hi, my name is Amy Miller. I live at 936 Private Road, 897. And no, we are not residents here in the city of Stevenville, but this tax increase will affect all of those who purchase goods and services here in Stevenville. And so I would like to just address the tax increase and say that I am against it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt Miller?
My name is Matt Miller. My address is 936 Private Road, 897. My wife and I moved, our family here to the Stevenville area about two and a half years ago, from the Houston area. Quite honestly, because we were sick of the insanity that we saw in a big city. Well, we're sick of the insanity in Washington, and it seems, I, I had hoped that in a smaller community, that we wouldn't be following the same path. In the private sector, when I wanna raise, I've gotta go work harder. I've gotta go get another customer. I was a public employee previously, Air Force pilot for nine years, graduated the United States Air Force Academy back in 1989. So I understand what these cost of living increases are, because I benefited from them at one point in time. But the reality is, those of us out in the private sector are hurting. Many of us are working two to three jobs already. Many of us have not yet even begun to experience what healthcare is gonna do in the next six months to a year to our lives. And I think it's time that at all levels of government, we decide to tighten our belt and look to where we can cut. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Kathy Schaefer?
I'm Kathy Schaefer. I live at 2186 County Road, 423. And my husband and I own some property in the city, so we have a little bit of real estate interest, but also I echo Matt and Amy's, who happen to be my family, by the way, their sentiments that, living in the county, we're gonna be affected by any tax increase that happens at the city level. And I would also echo, echo Xena's statements. I, I would hope that you would consider that we will all be affected, and that it's a time to tighten our belts, I feel, at the council level, the city level, as it has been at the home level, in my house and in the households around me. And I'd encourage you as council, councilmen and women, to tighten the belts, make the tough choices. I want for the staff to have increases commensurate with their, their workload and, and with what's available from the city, but I'd encourage you not to increase the taxes at this time to go ahead and, and cut, make the cuts that need to happen, and, and to move forward to make a better economy for our economic growth, or make a better situation for people to come in and contribute to our economy that way. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the work you do.
Okay. Okay, Cipriano Rivera?
My name is Cipriano Rivera. I live at 1050 North Paddock Street, and I basically have the same comments that some of the other people had. My wife and I, we're both teachers. I teach kindergarten and she teaches second grade. And we get paid on the same day once a month, every month. We get paid on the 26th. And quite honestly, we can't make it. Now, I've heard some comments that the economy's going up. The economy might be on, on, turning to a point where it's better, maybe in the private sector, but as teachers, it's not getting better for us. And we don't have a car payment. We have a, a moderate mortgage. We don't have credit card debt. We have three kids. One is in stings this year, another one is in band. We had to get a clarinet. Another one is in soccer. And we, we have a good life, but when we go to the grocery store and, or when we get gas, it's about 50 percent more than it was a couple of years ago. And I'm, and I'm not representing a whole bunch of teachers, but I can tell you that that's what it's like for all of us. And I think the toughest thing was going to college and having two college-educated professionals in the home and struggling to make it. And, and this tax increase is not gonna help. And, and we, you know, and, and people say, "Well, get another job." I've had other jobs, and that just made me less effective at, at what I'm supposed to do, which is teach every day. And I would like to say that I really appreciate the council, your work, and, and the mayor, and I know these are tough times, but guys, when, when two teachers find it difficult to get by, and I'm just being really honest, that, that's a sad, that's a sad commentary on economics in, in our country. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the, the forms that I, we had turned in prior to the meeting. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Yes, please come forward and just state your name and, and address for the record, please.
I'm Sharon Zachary. I live at 649 East Long Street, one of the little mansions down by the river. And I, some of you may know, I own Santa Fe County Taco Company. Been a businessperson here for 25 wonderful years. Love Stevenville. Moved here because wonderful town. And I agree with Xena. I am not opposed to taxes. They are a necessity. They are a privilege if you live in the United States, if you live in Texas, if you live in any of these places that are so vastly superior to the rest of the world. So, please understand that that is where I am talking from. Having said that, there are many, many, many businesses that have gone out of business here in Stevenville. And while the economy may be rising for some, and while we may be attracting new business, we are facing the very unknown black hole before us of the healthcare regulations that are going to be imposed on businesses. Nobody, I went to an insurance seminar put on by the insurance companies, and a lady who's a Washington insurance lobbyist addressed us. And even the insurance companies are not really sure what this is going to do, and therefore the businesses have no idea. I had anywhere between 23 and 25 employees in 2007. I now have six, and we are still in business. I'm very proud of that. I have swum with the sharks. There are corporations I could name who have gone out of business, you know, Grandies, Burger King. We've survived. We have survived because I have watched how I spent my money, and we're still alive and we're still kicking. Now, if you've been into my restaurant, you know my, my chairs look pretty bad. But there's several restaurants that just closed that have very nice chairs. Sometimes, sometimes you have to put up with the little foam coming out of the vinyl and the little rip here, because you know what? You can still sit in those chairs. And we're still here making money and providing not as many jobs, but some jobs. Oh, thank you very much. I, uh... I don't know. It seems to me, I'm with Xena, that surely somewhere we can cut for a while until we see how things are going to go. We're overhead of hearings today about possibly a war. I mean, that's scary. Oil prices have gone up. Like I said, we have the insurance crisis coming. I don't know that it is so critical that we can't wait maybe six months to see what's going to happen in a very, very scary time right now. I also feel like, uh, sometimes you have to look at stuff pretty cold-heartedly, which I have had to do. I'm certainly not making the money I was five years ago. I don't know, for example, this is just me driving by and I looked at the books or anything, and I'll try and hurry up. Thank you. But I drive by every day by the swimming pool thing that we built, and I'm wondering, does that make the city money, or does that cost the city money? It kind of looks to me, given that it's not a new six months out of the year, that I'm sure the insurance is horrific since it's a swimming pool, and the fact that you can go down to Walmart and buy a $200 swimming pool for your kids in the backyard, I don't know. Have we thought about maybe privatizing that? Is there somebody who might wanna come in and run it for a profit, for example? I don't know. These are just questions I have as a businessperson who has had to make really harsh choices budgetarily in order to keep ahead of water and gas. Thank you all very much for listening, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any others? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't fill out the forms.
Okay, you can, that's okay. Just state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I apologize, I was chewing gum. I didn't intend to speak today. My name is Nat Wofford. I live in an apartment complex over here on 1620 West Swan. It's a temporary, going on a year now, it's been temporary. But I have been a resident of Erath County since 1964. Some time in the military, living away. And in that, I'm now a city resident, I have a post office box, and I'll, on a daily basis, more or less daily, I'll walk from my apartment to the post office and get my mail, exercise, sign, you know, whatever. And on my way to the post office, I, I pass the police department. And I think back, again, I don't know the city's budget. I'm, I'm not well-versed in that, so I apologize. I don't know what law enforcement budget is or any of that, but as I go by, and we'll backtrack a little bit, in 64 we moved here, I believe, the, the population on the, on the city limit sound was something like 8,700. That could be plus or minus 1,000, but... And we had three cop cars in town. Had the sheriff's department, the campus police, you know, if you got out of hand, they'd pull out the walkie-talkie on you, you know? It's, it's, but now they are legitimate law enforcement officers, I understand. Even have their own department. Campus is much bigger now, I understand. But I'm just curious what the law enforcement budget for Stevenville is, because, like I said, there were three police cars and suitable manning to keep those in operation. And I was going the other day, and I swear, I couldn't believe my eyes, I counted 12 squad cars in the parking lot, and I, I assumed there were some on, on patrol. And that's, and you think of the manning to, we need law enforcement, and I understand things are different now than they were, but with the actual city limit population, city limit sign population of Stevenville, about 17,000 now, that's right at double since the 60s and 70s. And I, I just don't understand the, the magnitude of increase of the law enforcement, at least in the police department. I know we've got several fire stations now, et cetera. But any rate... Thank you, Cindy. Any rate, just an observation, we're talking about, you know, encouraging the council to, to tighten belt, cut where we can, as opposed to increasing the tax base, tax rate. So it's just a, an observation and a little food for thought there. I, I'm, I'm not down on law enforcement. No, no, please don't come away with that. I'm just curious about if, if there isn't, if, if there aren't some areas that the city could look at cutting back as opposed to increasing the tax rate. Thank you.
Okay, any others? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Tadlock. I live at seven six zero Bluebonnet Street. I just wanted to say right now that I see no reason for this tax increase. It's not necessary. If it is, then I should not be speaking to you to convince you we don't need it. You have the responsibility to speak to me to prove that we need it. We're in a situation where people in our community are doing the best they can. My wife and I, uh, now live on a fixed income. Guys? Let's, let's just tell ourselves for a minute that you cannot get any more blood from this turnip successfully. Okay? It's simple. Yeah, we may need to bring in some more money. Not today. Because your people cannot afford it. It's pretty simple. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, seeing none at this time, I will, uh, close the public hearing on the tax rate for two thousand and thirteen. And, uh, I would be remiss if I just, uh, didn't say thank you all for, for coming, uh, tonight and expressing your concerns. Uh, the way you articulated the issues were clear. And, uh, I know the council and I will, will, uh, take them in under consideration and, uh, and really appreciate your thoughtfulness in preparation for tonight. Okay, we'll move now to, uh, agenda item, uh, number six. And, um, that, the, the next three items, I guess I will, I will say, um, are related but independent from the public hearing and that we're going to look at fee structures and then the budget. So the next item is to consider approval of the child safety funds, which is, uh, I'll let Mark explain that briefly for us.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as a part of our budget process and annually, uh, we do have s- uh, some funds that are restricted in nature. Uh, and in this particular case, uh, we refer to these funds. Uh, there are some fines that are assessed for, uh, passing school buses illegally and, and being caught for that and received a citation, uh, as well as violations within school zones. Uh, certain citations are, are, there's actually a, an additional fee that's put on there besides the violation uh, that is restricted for, uh, child safety, uh, improvements throughout our community. Uh, we generate and, uh, in the agenda packet, again, we do, uh, have a summary. I'm sitting here on page ten of, uh, we, you can see that we generated this last, uh, last year, we generated about thirteen thousand dollars. We have budgeted to, to, uh, generate approximately twelve thousand dollars. Again, that, that is subject to, to, to fines, uh, that are assessed by the municipal court. Uh, but, uh, we tried, we have maintained one year's reserves of those funds. And then we try to spend the rest and allocate those to respective organizations that provide child safety programs throughout our community. This year, in our budget and, uh, through this process, uh, we have recommended, in the budget, and have recommended for your approval tonight, uh, that Star Council Drug, uh, Drug and Alcohol Abuse Programs be, uh, allocated twenty-five hundred dollars of these funds. That the Stevensville Independent School District, uh, their security fencing program that's going on at Gilbert Intermediate right now, uh, assisting them in, uh, with four thousand dollars. Uh, the Palux River Chi- Children's Adifficacy Center, uh, does educational programs, uh, for, uh, for children's, uh, situations and children's safety programs, uh, allocating them twenty-five hundred dollars. And then, uh, the, uh, Cross Timbers Family, Family Services, I believe is the actual name of the organization. Uh, Cross Timbers Family Services, they have a youth conference each year that's been very successful in allocating them three thousand dollars to go towards that program. Uh, those are the recommended, each of their applications with their justifications are enclosed here. And, uh, with that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions. And I'm not sure if any of those organizations have representatives here. Um, uh, but each of these do fall within the, uh, guidelines of the restrictions of this money. And we do recommend approval of their applications and funding. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mark?
Where did the funds go last year? Do you remember? Is?
Uh, we, uh, yes, and hopefully on page, page ten, you can see, uh, where we do have. Uh, we gave Star Council twenty-five hundred, the school district two thousand. Uh, Cross Timbers, uh, Family Services, we gave them three thousand. And then the Palux River, we gave them twenty-five hundred. So basically, everybody, we, we're giving additional funds to the school district, it looks like, at this particular request. Otherwise, everybody's just same as last year.
Thanks.
Mayor?
Mr. McDaniel?
Pending any further discussion or questions, I would move, uh, approval of the, uh, child safety funds being allocated as provided in our package. Second that, Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix to, uh, approve the child, child safety funds as presented on, uh, page nine. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries a unanimous vote. And we'll move to item seven, which is, uh, excuse me, um, yeah, seven, which is to consider an ordinance twenty thirteen fourteen, adopting the fee schedule. Mark?
Thank you. We do, uh, as a part of our budget process, we also, we, we're, we're talking about the expenditures, the programs and services, uh, the debt load that we have. We also talk about, uh, the user fees that we assess, uh, for each of the respective programs. Uh, all of those fees are, uh, available. Uh, and let me just kind of state too, for the record and, and for public purposes, that, uh, one of the reasons why we received, uh, and why the finance director received a transparency award is, is because, uh, we, we continually try to do whatever we can to make sure that all this information is available to the public uh, in a multitude of fashions. You, not only are you able to come up here at City Hall and get any of this information, uh, but please know that a copy of all of this, of all of our actions are over at the city council, or I mean, over at the city library, excuse me, city council, city library. Uh, but then we also have all of this accessible and continually on our website. We continually are updating that. Uh, and so, a complete document, the, the budget was, I believe, almost a hundred and fifty pages. Uh, it is all on the website. You can see every page that the council has been looking at, as well as the agenda package. You can look at checks. I mean, there's a lot of different, uh, respective pieces that I want to encourage, uh, folks to, to, uh, if you need some help educating or, or interested, feel free to go and look at your own leisure and time without having to ask anybody and know that that is available. One of those items that is a part of this whole process is our fee schedule. Uh, the fee schedule is posted on the website. Uh, but, uh, specifically, uh, this year, we talked about, uh, the proposed, uh, changes. And we have two proposed changes for this year. Uh, as a part of this, I want to just also explain that, uh, the last six months, the finance committee and the council, we have gone, I, I believe, very aggressively. Uh, there've been many questions asked and tried to go program and service by program and service, uh, looking at the user fees that are associated, uh, with the cost and beginning to really analyze and, and review those. And we are going to continue to do that this next year as we are, as we're making these recommendations. But the recommendations for this year, uh, uh, there is a recommended change to the, to increase the water rate, uh, the water rate. Uh, we actually do not implement that. So, kind of the action here, I guess, really, uh, we built, uh, we'll be taking the formal action on the water, uh, the potential, a proposed water rate increase of about five percent on the volume charge only, not on the base rate. Uh, and then the other fee that was discussed and mentioned here, uh, was at the landfill. And the landfill, we had a minimum of fifteen dollars and we, we've increased that to twenty dollars. And the per ton rate went from forty to fifty dollars per ton. Uh, now, that will be the one that, in essence, would be in effect and be implemented along with all the other rates that are here, except for the, the water rate increase that we've discussed. Uh, and then the tax rate vote will not happen for two more weeks. So, really, the action that you would take tonight, besides just adopting the fees here, uh, would be one, include one increase, and that would be at the landfill that we just discussed. And, uh, hopefully, we've answered all those questions, not only hopefully here, but also, uh, as we've gone through our individual analysis, uh, for that regarding the landfill, anyway. So, but other than that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mark?
You just might want to mention the scales we have there now and the more accurate, uh, way of assessing fees versus, uh, volume.
There's a bit of history and information, uh, for the public, uh, and some of the discussion that we did have. We have gone from a, a volume based fee to a weight measurement fee. Uh, and, uh, we, we were measuring it, and so in some cases, some might argue that they might have been paying for air. Uh, and again, there's just two different ways of doing it. So, uh, a year ago, a little over a year ago, I believe, we, uh, acquired and have, have installed now s- some scales out of the landfill. So now we are able to go to a weight based and everybody is playing, pay, everybody is paying, including ourselves. We pay it ourselves, the city pays it when we go out there. But everybody will be paying, uh, forty dollar, or fifty dollars per ton now with this increase. We, when we originally implemented it, we did some analysis and we were literally just trying to make sure we just, we're showing, uh, uh, taking our best guess at what that rate should be. And now with a full year of, of volume coming in, uh, again, we think, we feel like this, uh, rate is justified as well as comparing it to the other competitors around us, uh, around us where people would take the same volume and same weight. So, but, yes, we did just, uh, within the last year, make some changes here that included the scales to allow us to measure this more accurately, so.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, yes, sir.
Could I ask a question? Has this, uh, affected the volume with raising the fees this high? Or are you going to make less money on the, the landfill and put more mu- more traction of ditches around in the long run?
Well, we've actually, uh, seen an increase in our volume this last year since we implemented the scales. So, uh, you know, we're, uh, we're gonna, I recognize the deterrent that we don't want to encourage illegal dumping either. Uh, we do have a lot of dumping that occurs inside the dumpsters inside the, the community as well. It is something that we do balance. So let me just say, yes, I believe we evaluate all that as we are looking at our.
Right, and, and the council did discuss that because we understand that you can raise it to a point where it just ends up being illicit, uh, dumping in the county and we don't want that to occur. And we think what's happened here, as Mark said, is with the scale in place, it's increasing our accuracy. And so people know they're getting what they're paying for, uh, versus, like he said, just showing up with the truck and saying, oh, well, that's about right. Um, so, this, but it's a work in progress. I mean, it's all, uh, as are all the fees, um, as we move forward. So, uh, and, um, any other questions for Mark on that? Okay, I'll consider a motion then.
Mayor? I move approval of the fee schedule presented to us on page thirty-seven through forty-eight of our agenda packet.
It's been moved by, uh, Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Ms. Taylor to, um, approve ordinance twenty thirteen fourteen, adopting the fee schedule as, as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries a unanimous vote. Uh, twenty thirteen fourteen, ordinance is approved, adopting the fee schedule as presented. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, to consider ordinance twenty thirteen fifteen, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and thirteen and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. And, uh, Mark, you want to give us a, a brief overview?
Uh, the, uh, summary that we do have here, and I'll just, uh, address a couple of comments. The, the paper did call me, uh, Friday afternoon, uh, and, uh, attempted to relay this information so that it, it could become more public, uh, as, as we continue to move forward with actions. Uh, the total, uh, total budget that is being proposed, the budget is referred to, uh, from the expenditure side. Now, the total budget that is being proposed is twenty million, five hundred and twelve thousand, forty-two dollars. Uh, we do have, uh, s- seven different funds, uh, eight different funds that we actually operate with. Uh, some of them, the water fund, some are self, self sustaining and basically are one hundred percent user fee based. Uh, the one in particular that, uh, generates a, a large majority of the questions, and so I want to kind of really refer a little bit to it and, and identify at least what was presented during our, our budget work sessions and throughout this process has been somewhat of a priority of expenditures, um, of, outside of the programs and services. It, it is our goal and, uh, objective to, uh, through the directors and all the staff, uh, to continue to provide the programs and services that are being asked of us by the citizenry. Uh, those programs and services are spelled out and being able, and if you do look at your budget, uh, there is a special pay, there is one page specifically that shows kind of the net effect cost. Uh, I believe it might be on page fifty-four, but on, on, in fifty-four, in your agenda today, on page fifty-four, uh, does, uh, and we, we, we talk about this on, on many occasions as we're doing, continuing to do our analysis of the, of the cost of programs and services that we provide. In the general fund, uh, we will have, uh, basically, uh, the revenue, the net revenue, uh, after we eliminate and pull out all of the, uh, capital expenditures from last year, the one-time expenditures from last year, uh, the priorities that we have were roughly about four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Of that amount, uh, then, what we did i- is, uh, as we've discussed and the priorities that were outlined and discussed at, during our budget work sessions, is for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars to be spent for capital replacement, fleet replacement programs and the like. Uh, the exact detail of those pieces of equipment, uh, we do maintain. We, uh, we replaced, uh, patrol cars, dump truck, uh, criminal investigation vehicles, uh, cemetery pickup for this year. But on page fifty-six, it is spelled out, uh, specifically, uh, at each piece, an item that i- is attempted to make those replacements and, uh, recommendations. They're, they're the highlighted section of that page on page fifty-six. So, uh, heart monitor, defibrillator, uh, elevator repair, tactical medical equipment, uh, and then a generator at the public safety building. Uh, the next item of priority that was discussed, uh, was setting aside two hundred thousand dollars and authorization to hire some additional dispatchers. Uh, we've, uh, heard at mid-year in April and have gone through, uh, some additional discussion regarding the increased workload that has occurred at the dispatch area. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars would allow us to hire the, in, in essence, the equivalent of four, uh, additional personnel. And, and that was priority number two. And then the last, uh, priority, uh, that was mentioned and discussed and is requested to be funded this year has, we've been working on, uh, compensation, evaluating both the, uh, number of personnel that we, we have to perform the program and services as well as, uh, competitive compensation structure. And the money that's set aside in this budget is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that. The last thing that's been set aside has been seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to, as we move the police station, uh, the fire department moves out of the administrative area and moves out to the new, uh, to the new fire station. Uh, then, uh, we've been renting some area and allowing, uh, the police station to come, hopefully, get back under one roof again. Uh, and there's been seventy-five thousand dollars set aside for renovations to the public safety building. Uh, what is not, that would be, that is what's recommended, that's what is proposed in this budget. Uh, specifically, what we did discuss are some things that were not funded in this budget. What was not funded in this budget is a street, uh, a, a, a street renovation pro- project for this year. We will have some internal projects, but we will not have and do not have, uh, have not budgeted the funds for, uh, a street renovation project. Uh, the next item is, uh, we have, we've been talking on several occasions about it. Uh, the next item is, uh, we, we've been talking on several occasions about adding additional personnel to the fire department. Uh, that was, in essence, was the next issue. And then the next one after that, uh, we have, uh, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've been discussing, what I refer to in kind of package under economic development issues. And there's fifty thousand dollars, in essence, to help establish a tax increment financing, fifty thousand dollars to do a thoroughfare master plan and fifty thousand dollars to do an annexation master plan to address, uh, some of the growth issues that we've had. And the only one that, uh, which we did discuss and that has been, it's still under the restricted reserves, is fifty thousand dollars for economic development, uh, but it was not, at least it has not been funded at this time, that, but it was discussed. With that said, uh, that is the proposed budget, uh, of twenty million five hundred and twelve thousand and forty-two dollars with the priorities that we discussed during our budget work session deliberations. I'll be glad to answer the questions outside of that and I, I, I welcome any of the citizenry to call me anytime and let me try to help answer some of the questions that you may have because I don't want you to feel that, uh, you're not being informed. So, with that said, I'll be glad to answer the questions.
Okay, any questions for Mark? Okay. And, uh, Mark, I'd like to thank you for that, um, overview and, and the staff's work on the, on the budget. Um, okay, I guess I'll entertain a, a motion for, uh, ordinance twenty thirteen, fifteen.
I would move we approve the budget. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve, uh, ordinance twenty thirteen, fifteen, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty thirteen, and ending September thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Dr. Cross.
I've always found it rather passing strain that, uh, strange that we, uh, have a vote on the budget before we vote on the tax rate.
Amen.
Uh, it seems to me, now, normally in the past, this hasn't bothered me because I normally supported, uh, the tax rate recommendations, but, uh, my question is this, um, supposing we pass the budget now and then we decide that we want a lower tax rate than has been proposed, uh, we are going to be having another, I think, uh, tax rate hearing next week on the tenth and then, uh, when do we vote on the tax rate, the seventeenth?
Uh, it, we will have one more public hearing on the tax rate next, on the tenth, next Tuesday, and then the following Tuesday, uh, is when we'll be taking a vote on the tax rate, the seventeenth.
It would seem to me that if we, uh, that if we're voting, if we adopt the budget now, I'm not altogether certain how we can, or what the point of, uh, additional tax rate hearings would be and what the point in additional, uh, vote on the tax rate might be. But, um, let us, let us suppose that we do adopt the budget now, then we decide, uh, after, uh, thinking about what we were told tonight, uh, by members of the audience and by presumably what will be told next week, uh, as well, um, and we decide that we want a lower, uh, tax rate, um, uh, it naturally follows that we're either going to have to come up with other ways to raise revenue to cover services or we'll have to cut services. Uh, how can we do this in light of a budget that's already been passed?
Number one, it's required by law, that we do it in this order. I'm not sure why, Dr. Cross, but it is. And secondly, my, my suggestion to you would be if that happened, that you could amend your, you could go back and amend your budget. It's not set in stone, you can amend it. It's my offhand thoughts and I think that's correct.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other, uh, statements or questions? Mr. Savin?
You know, I, I came to the council two years ago and had the very same question. And it is, it, it, though we can, I know we can amend a budget anytime, you know, matter of fact, we do it sometimes monthly based on revenue income and other needs. I know we do amend budgets, uh, but this is a way to start off with, here's why we think we need this much money. And so I think that it is a little bit different kind of task for us tonight. You know, I want to thank Mark and his staff for lots of things they did this year. I'll give you an example, uh, Scott has jokingly twisted me a little bit about the one finance committee meeting, as long as I think in history or something like that, was about six hours. And I can tell you that the folks here in the, in the room, that this, the two particular staff, the, the, the two chiefs we have here took, you know, were drilled for six hours on why we needed what we needed. And, and so I, I do believe that there are some needs that we have. It's a big job to come up with our budget. Um, we also pushed pretty hard this year to come up with some other ways of how we look at our, our numbers and I think Mark and, and Walt particularly have come up with some really good information. You know, I, I'm a business person and I just look at things from a business perspective. You know, Zena made the question of how, or I think it was Sharon that made the question, you know, why don't we privatize some things? Those are all questions that we're going to be asking the citizens, you know, we're going to be asking ourselves before long, is, you know, how can we turn this into more of a, a system that can pay for itself? And some of the things that we did, like tonight, some of the fee structures were, were results of that. You know, that it costs us this much to do it, you know, should the people using it pay more of the cost of doing that? And so that's one of the reasons the fee structures have changed. And, but then I looked at some of the needs we have that are not even listed in here. Uh, Mark mentioned there are no street projects this year. I think we heard from the street department that it would take almost a million dollars a year to keep our streets where they should be. That's a bunch of money. We have no dollars for that budget this year, not, other than cap, unless we go out and borrow money to do something. You know, we have a sewer problem that, I remember the first council meeting I attended, we had a particular, a one-point-six, is that what you're telling us? It's one-point, oh, you need a million-six. Uh, you know, we have sewer problems, you know, it's just, it's an amazing problems that we have. The question is, how do we do that before the problem becomes a crisis? And, you know, that's, that's part of the budgeting process, that I think is really difficult. Way to say, I don't know, for y'all who go to the senior citizens, we had bats in the senior citizen building, had to shut the building down for a while because the roof, we had ways for bats to get in the roof. Uh, we have the police department, Mark mentioned today, you know, we're leasing property. There's some cash in there to do some renovations for the police department, to get people back together. Those are all needs. Uh, Mark mentioned the fire department issue and I listened to the chief that night, I'd, I think I took Jimmy and I apologized to him afterwards about all the questions I asked, but you know, we have some issues of safety. You know, when you go to a fire, do people go into the fire or do they let the building burn down? You know, do you protect citizens or protect property? And there's some questions that the council has to address and every one of those costs money. The question is, you know, where do we spend our money? Is it, are we always spending in the right spot? You know, do we spend it where we really need it? And that's, you can come to our meetings and hear some of the disagreements on where we spend money. And I think that from one side of the room to the other, you'll hear lots of different kinds of comments, what we shouldn't and shouldn't, uh, spend our money on. And I can say that, you know, other, this is probably the best council meeting that I've attended in two years and four months now because the citizens came and they talked to us. You know, the way that we make decisions is often based on what happened here tonight. You know, I think that you heard some, you've already heard one comment about that from, from my colleague to my right. Because we make big decisions like this every two weeks to a month, something like this comes up. And when we don't hear from citizens here, you know, we'll get a phone call or an email or something, you know, but this is where it makes a difference. Because I've heard, I can tell you that I've heard from some of y'all here today and I've heard, and I, from a lot of others that aren't here, I can, I've heard from a lot about our budget and our tax issues. And so I've, I've heard those and I do believe that there are things that we can do to address our tax question that y'all raised tonight and I think that we need to discuss that a little bit further tonight. But I appreciate what y'all had to say. You know, you hold us accountable tonight and in about ten months, or nine months, that's when you really hold people accountable. And that's what you need to remember because it, because that's really when the, when the votes, this budget, these kinds of decisions are not made in September. These decisions are made when you decide who sits up here on the council. Oh, there's one other thing. I'm sorry, I told, I told Mayor, I said, just back, I just get ready to stay here tonight. I had some other things to say, I apologize. One of the things that, I'm sure, we have an esteemed guest here tonight, uh, one of the things that we've talked about that we need, I want to address it in just a public setting because every one of you also, you know, I, I, I talk to our friends at the county. Every one of you that says you're a citizen of Stevensville is also a citizen of, guess what, E. Rath County. You pay taxes in E. Rath County as well, every one of you. Some of y'all only pay E. Rath County taxes because you live outside the city. Well, there are lots of things that we ought to consider that have been discussed in our settings that I believe we need citizen input on, that we should be cooperating more with the county on some things. There's some, we had one particular, one person from the county, I'll just stand up and say it, that stood up and did something which was, I think, unprecedented for many years. We had a county commissioner that said, you know what, there's some property in Stevensville inside city limits, it's in my district and I'm going to stand up and do something to clean it up and spend county money, not city money. That's the kind of cooperation we need and we need to start working more. We have, how many fire depart, how many firemen in this county? How many policemen in this county? How many, look at all the different services and we need to, we as a cit, as a council and also the county commissioners' court need to start working better as a team and see what we can do where we share costs rather than duplicate costs. And the way that happens is because every one of y'all, if you vote in E. Rath, in Stevensville, Texas, you also vote in E. Rath County. And so you need to contact your council member to do that, or your, excuse me, your, your, uh, county commissioners' court because those folks, you need to hold us accountable to work better as a team because there are costs out there that we could probably cut. The privatization question is a really big one. We need to start looking at, what can we do that the government doesn't operate it? You know, I think there's some ways we can save money there, but all of those decisions are long-term decisions. They're not things that you make, you don't cut something overnight. You gotta, as a transition period, you gotta go through and make a good, wise decision. And I think we heard a lot of good stuff tonight and I appreciate what y'all had to say tonight, I really do, because I think it will focus us a little bit better. When you're not here, we don't get focused, we kind of do it fast. Thank you for coming.
Okay, now?
Go, go, go.
Okay. Just want to make sure he's done, I felt like one of those, that bird that used to dip in the water.
I, I don't have a limit.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess I'd like to make just a follow-up to the questions I was raising. Um, uh, first of all, I'm really glad that so many people, uh, came to the council meeting tonight and contributed their thoughts. Uh, we need that not only when we have our tax hearings and our budget hearings, but I think throughout the year. And, uh, I hope this, uh, that, uh, that, uh, other citizens of Stevensville will continue to follow your example and that, uh, your coming tonight supports and reinforces the habit of coming to the council meetings, um, debating council issues and, uh, and participating in the discussion and deliberations. As was mentioned earlier, we are having another tax hearing, uh, or a hearing on the tax rate, um, next week and, uh, and presumably we'll be able to debate the matter yet again, uh, when we vote on the tax rate, uh, on the seventeenth. I'd like to, uh, offer two thoughts that, uh, I hope people will take seriously and that may or may not shape future discussions on this matter. Uh, first of all, when it comes to the tax rate, an issue is whether or not the city of Stevensville should raise by one cent the, uh, assessed evaluation per hundred dollars on property. Uh, this means that if a, uh, if the tax rate passes and if one owns a house worth a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about a ten-dollar-a-year tax increase, uh, an eighty-three-cent-a-month, uh, tax increase. It's not my place to say that that's onerous or not-onerous or anything like that, but, um, I do believe that, uh, tax rates should be, whether or not tax rates should be implemented or rejected, uh, should be discussed, uh, not only in theoretical terms, but with reference to actual dollars and cents by which we're going to be affected. Uh, the second point that I would like to make, um, is a point that, uh, several members of the audience, uh, mentioned. Uh, of the ten, uh, people who split before the council, um, five are to be especially commended because they were not only advocating, um, tax cut, but they were expressing, uh, recognition of the need to cut services as well. Um, and this is, uh, always, uh, you know, the part of the equation that, uh, gets rather less attention. Um, we are not going to be running surpluses or anything like that. Uh, the purpose of the, uh, one-cent, uh, tax increase, uh, that is, uh, that we're debating is simply to generate enough revenue to balance the budget, given the fact that the cost of services almost inevitably goes up. Governments, no less than anyone else, are affected by the cost of living, by inflation. And that means that if revenue goes down and if we are to obey the requirement that we balance the budget, we have to cut services as well. So, uh, I'm not saying that services should not be cut, I'm simply saying that those who want us to cut taxes, uh, to cut the revenue that we have to provide services, should accept the fact that if, as, and when revenue goes down, services will go down as well. Police protection, fire protection, roads, everything, or a lot of things at least, are going to go down.
Mr. Cross? What we're asking for you, for, from you, is to live within our means.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Certainly, and that, that mean, that's why we'll be cutting services if we cut revenue. To live within our means, we'll have to, we'll have to cut services if we cut revenue.
Okay, let, let me, you gentlemen can discuss this further, um, but I, we appreciate the, the dialogue. Uh, other comments?
Mayor, I have a comment to make. I was kind of waiting to hear more from the other side of the table. Uh, I won't be as eloquent as, uh, Dr. Cross and Doug Savin next door there to me, but, uh, I did write down what I wanted to say so I wouldn't forget. I'm not used to speaking in front of crowds this big. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Uh, in nineteen forty-one, a gentleman named Edwin Fieldner founded the Heritage Foundation. And a quote that I brought with me that he said that, uh, sums it up pretty good, is the best way to put more money in people's wallets is to leave it there in the first Our city tax rate has never been higher than it is right now at forty-eight and a half cents for a hundred-dollar valuation. The proposed budget, the two-hundred-and-sixty-four paid budget, uh, includes a, a tax increase of almost five percent, point four-nine-two. This is unprecedented. The, the taxes in Stevensville have, have never gone to this level before. Our commitment to fair play for our, fair pay for our employees must be balanced with no additional tax burden on the citizens. They are already facing three to seven and a half percent cost increases on the water bill as outlined in page three of our budget, in the near future for water and sewer system improvements. In addition to that, as we've heard, uh, in addition to the utility hikes, the Stevensville Independent School District appears will, will be having a two-percent tax increase on their rate also. Good judgment should prevail. I believe we should show proper restraint in taking more money in taxes from the property owners in the city. Business owners will probably be hit harder due to their business property in town and as a result, higher cost of goods and services will be paid by all. This was pointed out by a few of our speakers. If this budget and the five-percent tax increase were on the ballot for the people to vote on, how do you think they would vote? This budget is long on taxes and short on economic growth incentives. City growth should fuel any additional expenses in the budget. Now, five percent is kind of hard to, hard to figure out, but to put it in perspective, the five-percent tax increase, if this budget is passed tonight without being amended and that tax crease taken, tax increase taken out- and that tax crease taken, tax increase taken out, this tax increase is equal to an overnight jump at the pump of unleaded gasoline of sixteen cents per gallon. I, like my colleagues, would like to thank you all for coming. You have spoken loudly. Thank you for coming to this budget meeting and the tax rate hearing. Your grassroots efforts are what makes this nation great. Abraham Lincoln said, "Be sure to put your feet in the right place, then stand firm." I will not support a budget that has this tax hike in it and I will offer budget amendments to balance the budget without increasing the tax rate. Mayor, I would move a budget amendment. We have two, two areas of our employee compensation that are shown on page four of the budget. One is one point six percent for consumer price index. That's basically a cost of living increase. The other is one point four percent, which is pay adjustments. I move that at this time, we remove the one point four percent in pay adjustments, which equals to one hundred sixteen thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty-six dollars from the budget. Remove the entire penny increase that generates ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the budget, leaving eighteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. And with that, I move we spend twelve thousand, three hundred and seven dollars for emergency notification system for all our city residents, also known as Code Red. The cost of that is ten thousand dollars. The budget will allow for a two thousand, three hundred and seven dollar first-time setup cost. The, the balance remaining of six thousand dollars. I propose and included my motion that we spend for training slash education for new dispatchers. We're currently advertising in the newspaper for four new police dispatchers. We're gonna hire them, let's train them. That is shown on page one-seventy-nine. And, and that is my budget amendment in its entirety, Mayor.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Excuse me, Dr. Cross. Are we, I, I'm not certain on exactly what your motion was.
Okay, I'll restate it then.
But if y'all understand, that's fine.
Can we reread it briefly, Mayor?
Go, go ahead and, do you want to reread it for us, please?
My motion is to remove the one point four percent in pay adjustments in this budget. And I would put them at the top of the priority list at mid, midterm budget adjustments to put that back in there. I just don't think we can afford that at this time, one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Remove that from this current budget. And that offsets the tax increase. Keep the tax rate where it is at forty-eight and a half cents per hundred dollar valuation.
No, I, I understand that may be what you're saying the practical effect is, but that's not part of your motion, is it? Because we can't vote on the tax rate.
That's right. We can't vote on the tax rate.
Okay. We'll forget, forget the tax rate. Remove, remove ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars in revenue. Thank you for correcting.
And what, what is that from? I, I understood the hundred sixteen, six sixty-six in, in pay adjustments that you're canceling. Now, what's the ninety-eight?
That would be from general? General revenues? Ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It would be the same place that it's being spent from.
I understand that. Where, where is it coming from?
That's vote, that's vote on the tax rate. We can't vote on the tax rate, but you want to just reduce the revenue that, the total projected revenue number is what you're saying.
That leaves eighteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars to be spent, twelve thousand, three oh seven on Code Red for emergency notification system for all city residents. They had it in, in Hood County, saved a lot of lives when tornado came. I think it's worth funding in this budget and six thousand dollars to train slash educate our new dispatchers.
Okay. So if I understand, you're gonna reduce it by two amounts, the pay adjustment and then ninety-eight thousand, three fifty-nine that, that comes, that's gonna, supposed to go into general revenue under this plan and leave eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars.
Yes.
I think that's a good motion.
Okay.
Sorry. Is that already, we already have a motion and a second?
We do have a motion.
So what does this do?
This is an amendment to that main motion.
So, does Scott need to amend his motion?
No, there's, we'll vote on the amendment that is presented and then we'll amend the motion based on that, the vote on the amendment.
Is that correct?
Yes, you vote on the amendment first and then, and if it passes, then vote on the amended motion. If it doesn't pass, then you go ahead and vote on the motion that was not amended.
Right. Okay, so I've got a motion as presented and seconded by Dr. Cross to amend the budget, removing one point four percent pay adjustment, reducing revenue, ninety-eight, three fifty-nine, and then adding emergency notification, twelve, three oh seven, and training education for dispatchers at six thousand. Any discussion? I'm gonna see if, is there any discussion?
Let, let me just mention that our, our number one priority in this budget cycle was to, to, to fix our payroll problem. And this is certainly not gonna fix our payroll problem. Our number one priority in this budget was to fix our payroll problem. That's my comment.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let me proceed then with a, I mean, because this, this amendment just basically balances the budget as presented and takes advantage of the prioritization of requirements. So we'll go ahead and proceed with a, unless there's any other questions or discussion. Okay, we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Those in favor of the amendment, we'll start with place one.
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
No.
Place six?
No.
Place seven?
No.
Place eight?
No.
So that's a count of four votes in favor, four votes against, and the mayor will cast a vote in favor of the amendment. Okay, at this time then, we'll need to proceed with a, an amend, an amended motion. The main motion that's on the, on the floor is to accept the budget as presented now with the amendment as, as approved. And I'll ask if there's any discussion.
Mayor, a, a quick question. So, and I'm the rookie on the council, so if this is a dumb question, just throw something at me. But if we cut ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine out of the budget, then do we have to go in and offset it by cutting the, because in the budget, we're increasing salaries for employees by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, right?
Right. What, what that, what that reduction in revenue means is a reduction in anticipated revenue in the budget. And so it's actually taking it from a credit site or column. So it's not a reduction in budget content. It's a reduction in anticipated revenue. So it's the equivalent, for example, of changing the sales tax projected revenue from five point two million to five point one million. If, that's an anticipated revenue.
I, I just wanted to clarify and make sure that we didn't need, then need to amend the budget and knock that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand down on employee salaries.
That's what we just did.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, then we'll proceed with a vote then on the, on the budget. This is ordinance twenty thirteen fifteen, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty thirteen, ending September thirty of twenty fourteen, as, as amended. And we'll proceed with a, a roll call vote. Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
No.
Place six?
No.
Place seven?
No.
Place eight?
No.
Okay, that's four votes in favor, four votes against, and the mayor will vote in favor of the, the motion. So the motion, the motion is, is approved. Ordinance twenty thirteen fifteen, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty thirteen, ending September thirty of twenty fourteen, as amended, to remove the one point four pay adjustment, reduce revenue as stated, and include the dollars as stated for emergency notification Code Red and for trainer education for dispatchers. Okay. I want to say a couple of things before we leave this, this item. Because the citizens of this community need to know that this council is working hard for you. And Mark, I want to commend the work that your staff has done to prioritize requirements. That, that's something that we asked you to do that was a little different, but it is critically important for us understanding what the, what the needs are for this community and what happened from that. These, the dispatchers rose to the top and we have, we're funding four new dispatchers for this community. What hasn't been told tonight is one of the reasons that we're doing that is that we've had a woman that was on twelve-hour shifts for nine days straight. We've had eight dispatchers and they, they are worked beyond the point of effectiveness. And so we are solving that problem tonight. And that wouldn't have happened, Mark, if you and the staff hadn't done the hard work that you did with that. That's the glass half-full side of this. The glass half-empty is, I want to echo the point about the city and the county working together because we both have dispatchers and there may be the potential in the future for us to reap economies of scale by, by looking at the use of those dispatchers collectively. And that's, that's a discussion for another day, but it's, it's an example, we're in a county where a city is so, such a dominant population center for, for the entire county, for us to look for ways to work effectively and efficiently. And I'm gonna continue to work with Judge Thompson and with Tarleton, with Dr. Natavio on those type issues. Outsourcing came up tonight. That is something that we have discussed in this budget process. Splashville is an example of water parks all over the country that make money. That's something that Mark is looking at for us and it's something that we need to consider in the future. But outsourcing doesn't mean that you have to cut services. Outsourcing means that you understand what the fee is for the service that's requested. And the other thing that we've started to look at is how much subsidy are we providing for areas and is that right? Some areas, we're subsidizing up to ninety-six percent of, of their, of their income. And should fees increase for those areas so that, you know, we do need to pay for some things, but, but maybe not all of it, especially if it's a fee area. The comment that was made about percent tax versus income, that to me is something that I raised a year ago that we ca, we have to keep in context. Mark provides for us in, in some of our, our study homework comparative tax rates for us in other communities. And if all we do is look at the tax rate, we aren't getting the right picture. Because what you've got to also do is lay that aside, the median income for the community where that tax rate resides. And Stevieville, in that chart that he's provided to us, is next to last in median income. We've got to make our economy better. We've got to grow our economy and that's a, that needs to be a, a focus for us. I'm, I'm disappointed that we don't have any economic development items funded in the budget, but I'm encouraged by the work that Steadco, the Chamber and the city have now launched on to look at this collectively because no one entity by themselves can solve this. But together, we can leverage our strengths to provide unity of effort in economic development. And I think in the long term, we'll be successful. The last area, you just heard about streets and, and it, it is a, streets and water and sewer are for our city and infrastructure the social security and Medicare of, of the national level. We've got to understand what our capital improvement requirements are in those areas. And I'm hopeful that, that we will, you know, look at that in more detail in the future. It, it's something that, that I know that we're, we're working on and we've made great strides this, this budget cycle, trying to understand not just what does the budget need this year, but what is your five and ten-year requirements? Because we need to build a budget that's built around a multi-year plan versus just a single, a single snapshot. So with that, I, I want to thank the council for, for your hard work on the budget and, and for the city staff for theirs as well. Okay, with that, we'll move to the, the consent agenda, which is item number nine. And I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Here's been moved by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the consent agenda is accepted as, as presented. All right, that moves us to item ten, comments by the city administrator. So, Mr. Kaiser?
Thank you. I, I would like to just give a, a quick update on the street projects. I've had multitude, about as many calls about the budget and the tax rate of late, if not more, on the streets and what's going on and what are the time completion dates. While Tech Dot is, is responsible for FH nine-eight-eight Northwest Loop, that is a scheduled projection completion date of November. They did redo, they were given an additional two weeks of time to work on that. But for all intents purposes, it is still what I would really consider to be on schedule, which is gonna be completion in November. Of this year, I know. It feels that way. The Alexander Road project is scheduled to be completed in October. We're well on schedule there. We've actually, again, I'm very excited about that, but all the residents in that neighborhood, it is at the end of October. Hopefully, we will be completed with that particular project. Dale Street is probably the one that's been most visible of late as a result of the school openings and schools starting back. We, we tried to get that completed, but their project timeline allows them until the fifteenth of September and we are anticipating that to be completed by the middle of this month. So hopefully, the next couple of weeks, we will have Dale Street open back up and available for thoroughfare. And then McQuaheny Street, as you noticed on our accomplishments list, I do have it, it is being completed. I think we're still doing some punch list items of cleanup, but for all intents purposes, it's basically, it's been passable. What I did, what I thought I'd like to do at this, for this particular meeting tonight, and there's been a lot of discussion, I know a lot of people have a, a lot of questions about the commercial development and economic development efforts that are going on and have been going on. And I, when I give public speeches, I, I call it, you know, let me kinda give you the gossip, what's going on right now. And I kinda call it the gossip a little bit. So if I may, just make you aware of some of the projects that are going on. Some of them you may be aware of. Some of them you may not be aware of. Some of them are very large and some of them are not. But, but I thought I'd just let you know that we do have around fifty million, forty-four million dollars worth of projects under construction right now, commercial projects under construction. I'm not gonna talk about any residential construction that's going on right now. But, but some of the first and easiest for me to really discuss are the ones that have to do with the apartment construction. I think we had somebody ask, or we had the discussion earlier about maybe what's going on there. And then we're, we're seeing right now where a lot of complexes are being built. And then we're we're seeing right now where a lot of complexes are being built, there's a continued increased demand. We actually have five projects on the books that are under various stages of completion. What's called Washington Street Apartments, 281 South McElhaney, 16 units are being built there. Pecan Street Apartments, 585 West Pecan, 16 additional units being built there. Mustang Ranch, which is the big project that you see out at the corner of Wolf Nursery Road and Fry Street, there's actually, it's it's almost the equivalent of 500 beds, but there's 198 units actually being built there for reference. Harden's Apartments, 663 West Tarleton, another six units are are under construction. And then Summit Apartments, 1690 West Lingleville Road, has been permitted for 75 additional units there at the top. I think we approved their rezoning here about three or four months ago, we had baby in the spring. That right there is a total of about 300, 311 additional units that, when they're all completed, will be added to the inventory. So yes, there's a lot of activity regarding student housing as well. This does not include the actual project at the corner of Low, Lilian, Sloan, and Jones Street that the university has permitted, and that is actually, it's for 500 beds. I'm not sure how many units that actually actually entails there, so that this list does not include that particular project. Some of the others, smaller renovations that I think are are noteworthy, and I just want to kind of point out, and there's a couple of them that I think are are very interesting and very excited about. But we've all seen, and I think what's referred to as the Dawson Saloon at 190 West College, it's being completely gutted and renovated. Faith Lutheran has done a little additional add-on to their Family Life Center at 3,000 Northwest Loop. Livingston Hearing Aid Center is putting in a space at 2127 West Washington. One of the projects that I, again, it is very exciting for this community, the Wound Care Center is doing a significant, a large increase, and they're basically bringing in a bariat, a hyperbaric chamber unit, and they're adding on for that, which is a very nice project, in essence, for the hospital that they're bringing to our community. The Church of Christ has done some small renovations and add-ons. Pastafinas, I know several people, I just was there the other day, you can't get in the front door, I wasn't sure if I could get in when I stopped by, but Pastafina is doing that remodel on the front. The Foster Home is building a new barn. Timber Ridge Church at 205 East Clifton, they basically are the Riverside Baptist Church, they remodeled Riverside Baptist Church and are moving in there. And then we also have Bella Spa remodel, one of the units out at at the shopping center. Now, now for the real gossip, and I think the bigger projects that probably a lot of people are interested in, and I'll start with the easiest ones first. The biggest projects are Central and Chamberlain Elementary Projects. Again, those are $20 million worth of construction, and we do still continue to participate and and inspect and oversee and continue to work with them, so that's one of the reasons why it's on our list. Another one is Brunner's Chevrolet, 1515 West South Loop. They're doing a complete remodel to the front of their store, adding on some additional office space, working on adding some additional bays. And again, it's a very nice addition, and then also conforming to the GM new front look, we're very excited about that. The Allsips, for those that don't know, and maybe you do, but there we're, another Allsips is being built at 2725 West Washington, where the old, what I call the old tractor supply, no tractor, tractor supply. Sanders Tractor, excuse me, Sanders Tractor, Sanders Tractors was at on that particular lot. What you don't see right beside, or maybe you do see right beside it, and begins to become a little bit more of the gossip, is F and M Bank has been permitted, they have a temporary temporary location there now. They have not submitted us the final building plans for a new bank, but again, that is the location that they have permitted, at least for their temporary building at this at this time. We do have, and we have, I believe, we might have just issued the permit, or we're about to issue a permit, for the Rock House Offices are going to be building a new office location at 2002 Good Tree Edition. And then the other two, the last two that I have to let you make you aware of, is we have received the information and the drawings, we sent off a plan review for Ranger College to go ahead and move into the old Piggly Wiggly Building. And then last but not least, and probably the one that you don't know about, but we've sent off the plans, and my words are, when you, when these businesses put money where their mouth is, then then I feel comfortable in letting you know. But Aaron's Rental, that is located right besides Baxter Chemical on Washington Street, they have acquired the lot just to the, I'm going to call it to the north on 988, from the new fire station. And that that address is 1080 Bluebonnet, and Aaron's Rental will be building a building there at that location. And so all of the activity that everyone is seeing, and all of the positive growth, positive energy, the need for more services in our community continues to grow, and this is a great example of some of the positive things that continue to happen here. And again, just appreciate everyone's work as we continue to move forward. So hopefully, I've just enlightened everybody with all the construction that is going on right now. There are still several others, but again, they have not officially put their money where their mouth is and have not turned in a set of plans, so I'm not at liberty to discuss those projects. So if there are some other gossip issues, I'll just say that they're still gossip at this point. Outside of that, I will be glad to answer any other questions that anybody may have, and I I do not participate in the gossip, I'll just try to diminish some gossip.
Any other questions for Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll see if there's any comments by council members, start with Mr. Hogan.
I have a quick comment, I didn't make any, I had about four pages of a prepared speech to give, but Mr. McDaniel and others took the words out of my mouth. But I just want to echo that my colleagues sentiments and say thank you to each and every one of you for showing up. I I left Stevenville in 2009, went and worked in the evil place known as Washington DC for four years, and I can tell you that I sat behind room, I sat in rooms with members of Congress, and the best public servants listen to the people, and they're active and they're engaged, and their districts are in their communities. And I think it's so important that each and every one of you showed up, and I got a little frustrated working up there with some of the things that I saw, so I decided instead of sitting on the couch and complaining about it, I'd go home and try to make a difference. And each and every one of you came here tonight, you got off the couch, you're doing your your duty as informed citizens, and it made a difference here tonight. So thank you for being here, and thank you for the opportunity to serve you. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Dr. Cross?
A couple of comments. First of all, like Mr. Hogan, I want to reiterate my thanks for those of you who got off the couch, came here. There will be a couple of other opportunities, one on September 10th, one on September 17th. If you approve of what we did this evening, and then you need to support and reinforce your actions now by taking advantage of at least one, possibly both, of the upcoming meetings. If there are those who are watching us on television or who otherwise are not here and who disagree with the comments made here, or disagree with how the votes turned out, it's incumbent on you to come as well. We try to listen to everyone, we can only listen to those who speak up. Those who remain silent will not get listened to, not because we don't want to, but simply because we can't. I want to just mention a moment about the motion made by Mr. McDaniel, which I seconded and which I voted on. I was very impressed by the large number of people who came and spoke about the tax increase, and while the tax increase, as I say, is only going to be $10 a year for a house worth $100,000. It's not my place to say whether or not that's burdensome or onerous or anything like that. The degree to which it's burdensome, onerous, unfair rests in the mind of each and in the each and every individual taxpayer. My perspective is probably no better or no worse than that of anyone else. I did support Mr. McDaniel's motion because it did not take away from anyone anything that they currently have. It still gives the workforce, everyone in the workforce, a cost of living raise, which strikes me as perfectly fair. I think that to deny people any sort of raise at all would be in effect to cut their pay because of the workings of inflation. As far as salary adjustments are concerned, Mr. Evans was perfectly correct in saying that one of our major goals was to was to make up salary disparities. I see this as not as a goal that's been torpedoed or denied, but a goal that's been deferred. Mr. McDaniel was quite correct in noting that making additional salary adjustments should be our top priority during our mid-year budget review. And I will certainly support that, I will certainly support, to the extent excess revenue permits it, retroactive salary adjustments to make us as competitive as possible. I should like to remind the people of, you know, the members of the council and the members of the audience and anyone else, is that if we keep salaries low, we achieve temporary savings, but at a cost. Higher turnover, greater expense in recruiting more people, and over our, over the long run, we may wind up spending more money than than we might have spent had we had the salary adjustments now. That's a risk that we simply have to take, and I think those of us, myself included, who supported Mr. McDaniel's motion, bear the responsibility for that risk. The final point that I want to make is something that I've already said before, but I think it needs to be reiterated. The city of Stevenville is not the federal government. There's only a finite amount of money that the city of Stevenville can spend, and that is linked directly to the amount of money we take in. We are required to balance the budget. We cannot print more money if we run out of money. And so I would like to remind you once again that those of you who support tax cuts must accept the fact that when taxes go down, revenue goes down. When revenue goes down, services will be cut, not because we're mean, nasty, vindictive, or want to punish anyone. But the city of Stevenville legally cannot spend money it doesn't have. So as revenue goes down, services go down, because we can't spend what we don't have. So I would urge everyone who supports tax cuts, or at least preventing tax increases even as the cost of doing business go up, to keep that in mind. Of the 10 people who spoke before the city council meeting tonight, five did acknowledge this rather unpleasant reality. Five urged us in a oft-repeated phrase to tighten our belts. We, the council, must do that if the people demand it. But not only must we tighten our belts, whosoever is affected by revenue cuts will be affected by service cuts, and that means their belts must be tightened as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cross. Mr. Savin?
Yes, I want to recognize Gay Dorset, who's in the audience today. Scott Evans has been her champion for, how long, Scott? On this particular issue, we passed a resolution four weeks ago, five weeks?
Last, last month.
Last month. And we're, we passed a resolution also, our state representative wrote a letter to the PUC, and and there was some resolution of that. She has not gotten a total resolution yet to get it removed immediately, but I want to recognize that, you know, speaking up made a difference in that case, and I appreciate you being here tonight.
Mr. McDaniel?
Keeping it short, Mayor, I hope the headlines in the newspaper tomorrow say citizens win, because this is a victory for the taxpayers tonight. And the reason it is is because you all cared enough to come. Word got out, you heard about it, you cared enough, and you came, and and this is democracy. I'd also like to say, I didn't ask permission to use his name, so I won't, but my mentor is over here on this side of the room, on the back row. We we fought many budget battles together, and I am just so pleased that he came here to see us win tonight as far as tightening our belt as far as the city goes. And Commissioner Brown with the county, it's always good to have you in the chamber, please come back. We we mean what we say about cooperation, we will come sit in on some of your meetings and. And that's all I've got, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pendleton?
Just real briefly, I I think a lot of times we get caught up in what the final result we're trying to achieve is, and sometimes we lose, we lose the the vision of what it takes to get there. And, you know, this is just another prime example of how blessed we are to live in a republic type of government where we, you know, you have a say, we can control what's going on here today, we can come to an open forum and brush your, and voice your public opinions of what you think is right and how you think your city should be ran. And so I think that's something a lot of times we do take for granted, that we have those opportunities here, and whether or not you agree or disagree with what the results are, just the ability to have those types of venues is really what makes this a unique experience. So all the 35-plus or minus of y'all that are here today, I think y'all really witnessed something that's special, because it's really government at its finest as compared to what you see on CNN or MSNBC, so thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Mr. Nix?
I would echo what Brady said, it it is amazing when you have people come and make comments and express their opinions, their ideas. The other side of this coin is everybody here gets to vote. All of the people out there get to vote, we get to vote. Whether we were unanimous or not, the majority rules, and and we will do what the majority says do, and and that's what makes this system work as well as it does. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
First of all, I do appreciate everyone showing up, and it's it's good to see all these faces here. I think this might have been one of the largest meetings that are the largest attended meetings that I've seen in in my four and a half years. Speaking of that, I have some news. My husband, Zach, is sitting here in the front row, and I just bought a house. And this house is located in Timber Creek Estates, and that's right outside city limits, just a couple miles, right outside city limits. And so because the rules require that I be a resident of the city of Stevenville to continue to sit on the city council, I therefore am not qualified. So I'm offering my resignation at this time effective October 1st, and I'm going to turn it over to Mark to kind of.
Well, she gave me the opportunity because I know there's going to be some questions, so that we can try to address a few of those immediately. And the discussion has been, she will not be moving till October 1st, October 2nd, so she will continue to be a resident of Stevenville until that day in time. So what we have worked out, we're not able to call an election to have, we are now, by by charter and state law, only allowed to have these elections at the uniform election dates, which happen to be November and May. Our charter still is in conflict with that, I recognize that, so if you try to read that, please understand that we can't be more restrictive than state law, state law wins. So we, because of the calling of an election prior to this November election, uniform election date, we will not be able to meet that timeline in in order to to call the election, be on the ballot at that time. So therefore, we will be discussing at a future date on the council. You do have the option and opportunity to appoint somebody to fulfill that term, or leave it vacant and have the election in May. Those are, those are going to be our two options that we will be addressing at a later time. But also, just to kind of help clarify, she will be a resident on October 1st, and even if she moves her furniture, starts moving her furniture then, she's still a resident, so she will, her last meeting, she will be able to vote on October 1st. And the way it will work out, that is our next monthly meeting, our next business meeting, and at that time, we will be sure to recognize her appropriately as well. So I just want to let you know, but she will be able to vote on that at that particular meeting as well, just to let, kind of let everybody know. So she'll continue to participate, I believe, and based on our discussions, she will continue to participate and represent the citizens until October 1st, and so.
That may be good news for some and bad news for others.
We're happy, but we're sad. We're happy that you're getting a new house.
Yeah, it is exciting news, but also, I mean, four and a half years in the time you've served on the on the council, Martha, is is a credit to your part for public service, and you're going to be missed for that. And just look forward to the next month, and then they are excited about a new home and a place for kiddos to run around. And then they are excited about a new home and place for kiddos to run around and all that, so, good. All right, Mr. Evans?
Well, I'm normally the last to get to speak. And I was going to be first until Martha, we were going to miss her, but you've beaten that too. Let me echo what the rest of the council said. Generally, each month, we kind of meet with ourself and our staff. There's nobody here, and I think most of us are not even sure if anybody's watching us on TV. But it is good to have a crowd and to hear what you think. We don't always agree, but it is good. It's good that you're out there. We're glad you're there and we're proud to represent you.
All right, and I've, there's an echo in here, then blame me. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank the council for their hard work. I want to thank the staff for their hard work. This is a, this is a task that is never-ending, and that is the heart of service to our community. And, and just, I think tonight is evidence that we take that very seriously. I'm always trying to look to the future and, and understand where we need to be relative to where we are today. And I know the council shares that concern. And we're going to continue to work toward that. We are blessed in this community tremendously with a diverse economy, with a strong university, with the new presence of a junior college. And the synergies that are related to that are going to be phenomenal. But we've got to prepare for the future. And so when you hear Kenny Weldon say economic development, it's all, it's not always about bringing more people to Stevenville as much as it is, is increasing wage rates and supporting businesses that are here. And more importantly, is the role of the council is to provide adequate health and safety protection and, and infrastructure. And, you know, was, what was not said tonight about Torleton is an interesting fact.